Nah. I left them in the, I left them in the car. Yeah, I mean, I can go get them.
Just remember.
I always had to buy for an inside. So.
Oh, no.
You survived.
Oh, no.
You survived.
This is right.
Scared.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
As good as I can be. Yes, you're like, oh, my. Say, uh.
Everyone.
Now he's back in her.
She loves to do it, doesn't she? Oh, let's see. Where's the next one? Oh. That was not it. She said, oh, my doggy.
Uh, there's that now. And you have one paper.
Pass us one back if it isn't.
We've not been able to work so long. We haven't been.
He got the number of what? And the special name.
Well, give me some.
When I see it.
You want to go to your. In person.
You guys get here, you press leave. Hold this tape.
Sloughed down. Everybody. I like that.
Yeah, a person like all of us.
There should be a lot of first person.
It sounded awful like it did here, bird. It sounded awful like it did here.
Yep. You're in charge.
All right, it's the thirty, so we'll call this thing to order and get moving. We are down one tonight minus our fearless leader, but we will power through without him. Um, we'll stumble through. AJ, you've had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Any, any issues or questions or anything?
No.
Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
So how do we do that without calling? I can second?
Yeah. We have votes if two weeks come up.
All right. All in favor? For the minutes?
Aye.
Opposing?
Okay.
We can't hear. Bring it back here.
Oh, sorry. I'll try and.
We both don't have volume controls.
I'll use my teacher voice. I'll project.
I know that happens.
That's right. I'd yell to those people before, probably. Yes. Exactly. Okay. Um. Claims. Uh, you had a chance to review the claims?
Yes.
And Anita that we need to talk about in there? We made a. Um. For.
Temple and temple.
Temple, yeah, for temple and temple.
And then we made our water case maintenance. So I kind of. Let's do it to.
Okay. Do you approve the claims?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then budget hearing. Anita, you said that was advertised and everything?
Yeah.
As, as required?
Yeah.
So we just like open it up for comment?
Yeah.
Okay. In the budget hearing? Comments? Concerns? Questions?
That's the budget of what's at four.
What?
Budget.
It's a budget for the, the operating expenses for the. The town for next year. All budgets are advertised gateway.
State of Indiana gateway?
The Indiana gateway, Department of Local Government and Funding. Uh, we have a. We're allowed a four percent levy increase this year or for twenty twenty six. So our budget will, we're only allowed for the general tax rate and function increase. They limit that each year. So. Our total budget for the town for. Twenty twenty six will be. Five hundred and sixty seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. That includes. Uh, the general fund, our local police department, our roads and streets, our parking recreation, and any economic development or major improvements that we do. And that's the total budget.
Any questions? Any other questions, concerns? Uh, we need to.
Motion.
Is it resolution?
Okay, resolution.
Second.
We just closed the hearing. There was no public comment.
Okay. Hearing closed. Another exciting one. Um, and then. Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh seven. What do we need to do? Okay.
Okay, it's resolution twenty twenty five oh seven, resolution to reduce the current year's budget. Whereas in order to provide funding for the twenty twenty six budget and there being certain amounts from the twenty twenty five budget that will not be used as originally appropriated, the Town Council of the Town of Campbellsburg, Washington County, Indiana, would like to voluntarily reduce the twenty twenty five annual budget. Now therefore, being resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Campbellsburg, the twenty twenty five budget appropriations be reduced by the following amounts. And I'll read the fund name that it's coming from and the amount of the reduction. So riverboat slash casino is six thousand dollars. Rainy day fund, forty thousand dollars. Local roads and streets, five thousand. Economic development income tax, ten thousand. Community play park, four thousand. For total reductions of sixty five thousand dollars. Upon a motion duly made, seconded and tasked, the resolution will go. I might read that part yet. I'll let you all discuss it or open it up for comments or whatever you want to do.
Uh, any comment?
No, I don't have any. It's a reduction.
So do we?
We need a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve that resolution? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um. The inflational business, okay. So, go down the table or going over this? Anything else you have?
Just a couple of things. Um, I had mentioned that I would bring, I would find out how much landmarks has invested in the Wilkins House across the street. And it's a pretty good amount. So I'll pass this out. It's over three hundred thousand dollars. So there's one for each of you down there and I'll pass these out to the audience to look. So, uh. There's a breakdown that you'll see. That goes through the purchase price, uh, various expenses they had in taking this on, including what they have actually invested in property through renovations. So the, the purchase price of the property was thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. And they've got a, um, a amount called additions to basin, basis, and that's actually what they invested in renovations to the house, which is three hundred and nineteen thousand and seventy dollars. So a total amount of three hundred and forty nine thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And they had some fees, as I mentioned, associated with the improvements, legal and consulting, insurance and taxes, maintenance and miscellaneous expenses, which have added up to so far twenty three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. So it's, it's quite an investment in the town and they've used local talent to do some of the renovations and, and, you know, involve the community to a degree. And many of you were able to walk through it and see it. And we had the ribbon cutting for, for the Monon Trail. So, um, just wanted to, you all to see what the investment has been by landmarks. Uh, let's see what else.
Has there been a lot of interest in it when you heard?
Well, let's see, the, the contract just ran out for Missy Camburn, who was the Realtor, and they had gone with another Realtor for the next period of time. And I can't tell you who that is. I don't know who, who's got that contract. I think it was just negotiated, um, one day last week, late last week. But when I, there'll either be a sign in the yard soon or I'll report out when I find out. So there's that. And then, um, well, I, I brought cake for the, you know, you've got to celebrate every chance you get. So I thought, well, our speed limit's going down to thirty five. That may save lives. So, you know, you've got to have a, a slow down, thirty five mile an hour Campbellsburg safe cake. It's from J C, so you know it's good. And, um, Jennifer suggested that the first person to get is a speeding ticket from Joe. Make me get some kind of citation or reward or plaque or something.
Tell me I went two miles under the speed limit.
But this is a marble sheet cake with icing, so you know it's good. But I brought plates and, you know, everything and some water. If anybody wants to let their whistle while they're having some cake. And I'll leave it to the leadership here to decide when we can have our cake.
We can have our cake and eat it too.
We have it after. That encourages a meeting to go faster. And that is all I have.
That's it.
Yeah.
Good.
Um. Erin?
Uh, um, our street projects close along fairly decent or ahead of schedule at the moment out here, but nothing major. Uh. And we're gonna have this all tidy up around here before the festival. Back after the festival. And I've been working to go on, uh, clean up people's yards, van vehicles, trash. And we're starting to see some improvement on some leftover moving along.
Yeah.
I'm gonna touch that there.
I see change one way.
Yes, we did, we did make railroad from Crop Street. This direction, just one way. You're not supposed to turn when you go past railroad tracks onto a railroad.
You look at me like I've done.
No, we do have one way street there now.
Yeah.
That's good. That's good.
Schooling?
Go in November for four days and take test. First week of November.
I'll make like land, geez.
That's it.
Joe?
Um, like you said, been working on the, uh, the list of things. Uh, a lot of, a lot of progress being made with that. I'm waiting on a couple of the banks to get back to me. Of course, they're a little hard to deal with sometimes, especially when they're from out of town. Um, I checked on the speed signs about getting a couple of those. The contact that I had there no longer is April and Wood. Um, so I'm looking to hear back from them as well. So that's where we stand on that.
Have you noticed any improvement from the ones that we have?
I've talked to a few people and they said they've noticed a difference.
That's good.
Slowed me down.
That's good.
Well, aside from most people here, because a lot of people shop.
A lot of people aren't doing it. They're just, they're really not paying attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get one a little bit.
That's why I've been watching more, waiting on to hear back.
Down in Sycamore, there's one yellow car with a black stripe on it that zooms down there all the time. I see it go by constantly.
I don't know who it is.
And it's down there at Bobby Sebo's house was.
I recognize the car, but I don't know.
Bobby Sebo's old house down there for him and Diane.
Yeah.
I believe so.
I turned the corner brown.
Uh, brown and a brown car for my son. I was staying about best. That little yellow with black stripe car, it zooms down there constantly.
White, white houses there before the apartments.
And he does, and he'll get right up through there and he'll gun it just as fast as he can. And I've seen him, cause we was out there cleaning up the yard from where all the crap out was left from before. And this kid went up and now through there at least six times just to fly him.
And he's got a baby.
Yeah.
Now, Joe, you, you got, you seen that text, that thing that went into Campbellsburg, didn't you? The Campbellsburg group about that guy? And they said that he was probably passing our house going about sixty. But I wasn't home that day. Mandy was the one that put it into the group, but she, and I said, did anybody bother to contact Joe?
So I don't have any idea what he told me.
It was in.
They said about the vehicle speeding.
Yeah, it was on Friends and.
Yeah, if it's Bobby Sebo's house, that's Wade Robinson.
Yeah, everybody complains on Facebook and nobody talks.
Well, that's.
I don't know the number.
They think that's all you do, Joe three places.
Right, yeah.
How do we get a hold of you?
Call the Sheriff's Department. Call the Sheriff's Department and they will dispatch. That's emergency force on aisle one. Maybe dispatch. If you go aisle one, it doesn't make a difference one way or the other to me as long as the situation getting taken care of.
Well, I'll tell you what, one time, Taylor, my granddaughter, and then you know the big mushrooms that grow in your yard? By the tree?
Yeah.
We just kicked one. Out of the yard. Not a step on the road, just to see. I said, you watch, a vehicle come flying through here and one of them says, a little baby, cat, hog.
Oh.
And what'd they do? Just flound that sucker over and it went flying in pieces. They didn't know what they hit. But I mean, it wasn't something that could hurt a vehicle, you know?
Well, I didn't realize that apparently I've been speeding my entire life. But now I slow down.
Most people would not. Aren't doing it mostly, they're just not paying attention.
I guess I had to act as a reminder, especially the flashing part. I thought it was pretty, pretty cool.
The one that was on the bridge, the family, uh, Campbellsburg, that wasn't, no, that wasn't, no, somebody was. Yes, I guess if they was running down this end of Oak and I guess was doing it all the way around the wall.
He does it showing off.
Do you know who it is? Yeah, I don't.
Uh, Wade Robinson, so. Hey, if that's who we're talking about, I, I'm not sure what is the answer, but yeah.
Have you heard him more about the dog issue?
I have been down the trail.
Okay.
And I haven't seen anything. I was just talking and he said.
That's good.
Other issues, other than that.
Well, I do want to make one comment. There is a trailer on, is it down? Oak Street, trail on the left. The dog isn't out there all the time. They let it out. And then when I'm walking down, I always walk, I got sprayed and I'm, I don't want to spray an animal because I don't want to cause a hurt, but then still the same time. If I'm threatened, I would, I guess my comment is, is that the dog will come out and it will follow me, bark at me as I walk down, but it doesn't get aggressive, it cooks, it just kind of gets everywhere. It's coming at you, it's going to drool out of its mouth and everything.
That won't hold.
Yeah. I don't know who would let that. I don't know. He's got three or four packs of trees. Well, usually twenty three, they get out.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Um, parking wreck, nobody? Nothing? Anita?
I didn't think we had the budget hearing. Exciting.
AJ?
No. No.
We'll go around the road. Ma'am?
The only thing is we're getting ready for the festival, so want to see everybody out.
Exciting.
I have monarchs. Is that here?
Uh-uh.
Monarchs. Monarchs will be here Friday night. We are.
We'll get to it.
Or those are the one that kick on two every time?
Probably.
Probably. The one that says that y'all two Bennett sitting out there talking, you know, like he's got a crush on her?
Probably.
Everybody got a crush on her. Ronnie. Oh, my goodness.
I don't have anything?
Uh, just things in general about the festival. Uh, if y'all could make sure we had good weather, we would appreciate that.
Everything within my power.
Okay, that's good. Um, I wanted to thank Lisa because she wrote the letter and helped us get the speed limit changed. I had done something years ago and David, your dad, had did something.
He did proud of Lisa for sure.
Do what?
He did proud of Lisa for sure, because they worked on that for a long time.
I've still got my letter, so I can't throw it away now because it's done.
Well, the phones aren't up yet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're up.
Oh, wow.
It was thirty five, forty five.
It's way there. It's thirty five.
Going so fast.
This is directed to Erin. Did you get a list from Whitely and think that she was helping that city done?
No.
The festival? Maybe it's. Sorry, it does. We got me Thursday night or what?
And that's that.
The banners, I got the banners and put up.
That's what I was checking. When I was trying to, I told you that if you just buy them, so it never hurts to have that here, you know.
You're saying you start telling that, that signs?
Uh.
Over at the hardware, the two, she gave me two banners.
Banners.
I've got, if anybody needs them, signs and say word signs to the girl around town, but I've got to wear it, you know? Anybody want any, just let me know.
Anything else? No, I don't think so. Sir?
I thought it was a great idea when they ordered it on the highway and it looked like this because it got everybody's attention.
Yeah.
It changed.
Not everybody's.
It's a little. I know it's, it's fight for that.
That was good, thank you.
And I want to make a comment about the trail. I noticed there's a lot more people using it. Yeah, I think it's a good positive thing.
Yeah, that's great. Especially with the nicer weather, people are probably enjoying it more.
I did forget something. I, I wanted to ask, I think I said something to Anita the other day, the building on the corner. We were getting estimates?
Appraisals.
Appraisals, yeah. So, did we? We already talked about that and I missed it?
No.
I haven't heard anything. Last I heard was we were gonna get two.
Yeah, I haven't, hadn't come through yet.
I have two people that contacted and are gonna do the appraisals, but they haven't been doing the appraisals yet. That was, uh, last month. It'll take a little bit of time.
Well, we have since Tim's not here, but we still have, I say, go meeting, we're gonna set that up for me.
I said, did you guys, but probably I would.
We don't have it.
Put it off. Put it off until next month. Thank you, leader.
Leader. You have a leader. Anything else?
No, fine, thank you.
Um, back, back man? Anything?
Yes, um, I live on by the mall.
Uh-huh.
And I've been parking in the alley for years. Number one, it keeps the little kids around there safe, the kids playing in the alley. And it asked me to park because the house behind me, they are fixing it up. If I can move the car so they could bring the town truck through, that it was easier to bring it through on my end than the other. He never said, and don't park in the alley anymore. Until a little while later. I asked him why? Because, because I asked you not to. I said, but why? I said, what's the problem? I said, it's, you know, nobody can come flying through it. I seen Joe Keltner that came in. I asked him if there was a problem with me parking in the alley. He told me, know their weight. Said, as long as he's been town marshal, I've parked there, he's never had a complaint. Next thing I know, he sends kicker down there to have a talk with me, tell me to move my car, that he's mad and come talk to me here. And I told her that I didn't have to move my car because I had booked with Joe. Joe said there wasn't a problem with my car being sent there. Then. It addressed a little more and what have you. So I decided the alley onto my yard. But the tires on the passenger side is touching out. He would appreciate it if I moved those tires off the alley. But he had came with the paper and he handed it. And what's that? He said, clean your yard out. He said, you can quit parking in the alley and I can take this back with me. And I was kind of looked at him, he said, but I appreciate your two tires being off the alley too. So I handed him his paper. I said, we're done here. Then about. Couple of weeks ago, when it was going and the winds was blowing, winds were flying, then I called Joe Keltner again and I asked him. I said, sir? I said, this is Linda Jonas. I said, can I park my car in the alley just for tonight to get out from under the trees? Because winds are blowing everywhere. He told me, yes, he didn't see a problem with that. One, twenty minutes later, I get a text. Get your car out of the alley. So I called Joe back and I told him that I was moving my car. I called him and I asked him what was his problem with me. I said, I talked to Joe, but you didn't talk to me. No, I didn't, and I had to. Cause I didn't know that he now has the title of three department supervisor. But yet he complained about me parking in the alley, but the Beatles back there working on that house was all lined up the alley. So I told, I called Anita and asked her if she could give me the number for the Campbellsburg Street Department, because I need to talk to someone about the alley being blocked. Well, she told me that'd be him and she sent him. And here he came with the tape measure. And letting me know that so many inches of my property belongs to the town. Because the alley is supposed to be certain width. And I said, well, then he paid taxes on that few inches of property, because if I paid taxes on it, then I think the town owes me some money. I mean, I don't know where this problem, all of his anger from. He said, he had, but himself told me that he has never had a complaint about me being parked there. I've talked to all my neighbors around me. They all felt safer with my car being parked there, because the kids had somewhere to play.
And it's better here that you.
But, and the little girl that moved in, uh, Phyllis's house.
Yeah.
She told me, she said, well, Linda, she said, we have to worry about cars flying past our house constantly. She said, I felt better with your car in the alley. She said, nothing against you. She said, but if a car comes flying through there, they're gonna get your car before they come flying through the house. I mean, I didn't, my house did not come with the driveway. But then he seems to inform me that if I can afford a new car, then I can afford to put in a driveway. Number one, I didn't buy that car.
So explain, I'm trying to picture talking about between your house, Brown, that Brown house, okay. And it goes all the way through and it comes out by Phyllis's?
Yes.
It goes all the way?
The only thing that access to that alley actually is the house and the house behind me that's in.
Yeah. Fixing up or doing work.
And David Allen's the one that bought it and I bought my house from David Allen. Bought my house by the driveway. And like I said, I don't know what it would be all of a sudden is, just like handing out the. Yellow slips for water being wiped, okay? I worked every day in my life that I've been, so it's safe. Now I'm on this, I get that much enough. Okay, one internet bill, next month I pay my water bill. So I stay a month behind on both, but neither one has ever been shut off. Well, he said, well, maybe you need to have the internet shut off. Well, maybe my finances is none of his business. Well, maybe my finances is none of his business. And he told me that, "And don't go take hundred dollars and hand to Anita and expect that to be paid, pay your bill." Well, as long as I talk to Anita and I make, I work out a payment with her, that has nothing to do.
Maybe this is a dumb question, but is this not a problem that could be resolved by closing that alley?
That's.
Well, I mean, it needs, it needs to be there.
Okay, but wait a minute.
We won't.
The people, Anita, do you know who lived there before Tyson Williams and his wife bought it?
The Gordons.
Her name was Linda.
Yeah. Gordons.
Okay. She and her husband told me that they had been hoping someone would buy my house and they could talk to you because it could be marked a private alley. Because the only two needing access to it was myself and them. Then her husband, he either had, it was either a heart attack stroke, I don't remember, and the house got too much for her and she had to move. But there had, no, no one had ever said anything. The only one that goes through that alley is Mike Houchen. Mike Houchen has no business at that end of town. There's two roads on either side, and if he's going up and down the alley, he's up for no good. I mean, it's, I'm sorry, but it's that simple. But it keeps the idiots out of the alley.
I'm not gonna say who has a right to drive up.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying he's. Like this, because even when my car would park three, five, six.
Is this, is this a joke question or stuff?
Well, if it's an open alley originally on the platte of the Campbell'sburg, that alley is supposed to stay open. That's on, it's in everything.
Okay, well, the little girl that had lived at that house before, I did park out front on the street. Now, if I park out front on the street, then I'm taking up one lane. See what I'm saying? I started pulling in my yard, okay, and if my kids, I've even called Joe Sunday after church and told him, "I do Sunday dinners at my house, my kids come to it." They have to park in the alley, I said, "Is that okay?" He said, "That's fine." But then, like I said, anytime I have called and rested with Joe, Aaron told me, then call Joe and tell him, "I've got anything I want to do or whatever, cause it ain't gonna do me a damn bit of bit." Cause he said so.
Sometimes, sometimes, okay. Sometimes these things seem to be discussed in the executive session.
Yeah. That, uh, that has not been closed, but, but there's one that were Fernhardy's house was back around, back behind uh, for my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Joanne and Bill's family. That's an alley not there, but it's, nobody uses it.
Let us check into about the alley not to platte.
Well.
We have no ordinance and everything on that.
The reason that I'm.
And see what you can go from there, and then we'll get back with you.
Well, the reason I care to address it is because, you know, he would take it to the town board. You go to me? I did. I figured if I was gonna be talking to you, questions.
You let us address it, see what we can do about it, and everything go from there.
Well, because I have.
We'll contact you.
I have no, no parking spot, I pull in my yard.
Understand.
And, you know, it's right under a tree, no, I don't have the money to have the trees cut down, you know?
We understand.
And that's where I have parked, and like Joe told me, ever since he has been our town marshal, I've parked there, he's never had a complaint.
Okay. Let us look into it and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Is that anything else, or is that? Anything else you want to discuss?
Okay. I think number one, I don't think he has a right to talk to me or talk to people the way I do.
We'll look into it and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I am. Um, I've got a topic that I'll bring up at another meeting after I get a copy of the tailwind law.
Which one?
All, all the ordinance.
All the ordinance.
They're all.
They're all online.
They're all online.
Yes.
I don't have a computer, pull it all off.
Copy, you can come to the office and I'll meet you.
Oh, I'll be more glad to do that when I pay my bill.
Anything else?
Not right now.
All right.
The only, of course, I'm just here being honest. But I will say that I have seen something that really concerned me. Tom is correct. The walking path is getting a lot of, you know, out. I haven't seen, and of course, right there where I sit, I can see everybody comes through, you know? Well, I've also witnessed a couple of cars dropping down the walking path. So, anybody that's walking that walking path.
Please say that, that shows them that going down.
And it's coming, what's happened, and I've, I've witnessed two, that's not counting what I haven't witnessed. But they come down the side alley and, and it's, it's been even after I watched Joe go over there and walk it for the dogs, cause I seen Joe out there walking it for the dogs. But it comes from like behind the old hardware store, coming toward my house, and then sign was all red, and they just kept running down that walk it. And you knew, I knew that it wasn't an official vehicle, and it wasn't at the times that they would have been working on it. So, more, I'm letting y'all know.
I've seen, I've seen a trail on, I've been on it, I just wonder.
It's, it is, it is people, that's the second time I witnessed.
In multiple areas across county?
Yeah, I mean, even if they had a way of putting a camera, you know, right there where they, you know, in the entrance points, so that, I mean, if they, cause to me, that would be, that could be catastrophic to, to kids. Yes, they are, some of them, I think, to be honest with you, I think some of them might be.
You don't.
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah.
Well, it's there, I guess I'll just go drive on it, and that last thing you was going down the avenue.
But you're aware of that?
Yeah, but.
We are.
We're aware. Yeah, and that's. Yes.
We got.
Yeah.
Just don't have any more money.
Yeah.
The hell with that.
I just think the point is, if you ever do see that, take a picture of it.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of. A lot of that I think out there. That, I mean, the people that I've never seen before, I mean, you know, a lot of young people. And actually, I've rode out, I've rode on my rollerblades, having to the country, and there's people that would.
All right. Um, anything else?
Uh, uh, there was. Oh, in support of Campbell'sburg Festival, to do something, just to let everybody know, every year, the festival committee, we'll still be on, on tickets for sixteen dollars a piece. And the festival actually makes a good return on the leads.
Is she?
Okay, uh, once we got the festival, so that, I'm telling you, hot people, we need volunteers. We don't pay nothing, but we, we appreciate the help. Why? What are you waiting for me to do? You say what you wanna do and find your job.
There were like teenagers who wanted to volunteer, in fact, what are you?
Whitley.
Whitley.
Whitley, we've got one group coming, and they need people to help put their, putting it up on the sound, putting it up on the stage, cause it's gonna have a stage set up over here, apparently.
I've got some National Honor Society kids who are needing some volunteer hours.
Okay.
To stay in, so I might.
Yes.
Send them your way.
And I might say, MPT, I don't know what they call it, I guess, community outreach or whatever, but last Thursday, for four hours, we worked in the kitchen, cleaned the lower cabinets and and in this Thursday, they're gonna be the top cabinets and get them off, and straighten up that one closet for me, so.
It's good.
I appreciate that. Cause I, I couldn't clean that oven, I'm getting too old, getting down and getting back.
You should.
And so Janet cleaned the oven for me under the sink with, which is the disaster area, so there's not much need down there today.
Sir, you've been so patient, I'm sorry.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, I would like to start by asking, uh, who, who, like, is it the board that issues out the things for the abandoned vehicles or whatever? Like, how, how does that process work, like, from start to finish?
Please.
I know there's order placed, but I just wanna understand the whole process.
See, I'm trying to remember, I know we had, we were gonna have a record service, try to, we look for record services to try to tunnel, and we couldn't find anybody that was willing to do it a few years ago. Now, since then, scrap metal's gone up. So, it may be nuclear demands, we should check in and see if parties or, and I think I had, I, I found a business, I think I'd given it to somebody, I don't know who was, maybe we, maybe we make another inquiry and see if that's something that they'd be willing to do, but we can't storm anywhere easily, you know, before the town take on them.
Is, who's the person who says, "Hey, there's a car, go look into that"? Does that start with Joe?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sometimes, Aaron likes to be loose, sometimes you guys give me places to go. So. Uh, in my, in my particular case, cause I've received notification, but, um, I would like to know what the, uh, actual, the exact specifically, the code, the.
Define it.
Yeah, what defines it?
Do you have access to it here?
Yes, I, I have it, I wanna, I wanna hear it from the town to see this, because based off of what I've read of the town ordinances and state codes, my vehicles do not fall under that.
Events, of the, uh. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if I get this one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, is that the ordinance?
That's the ordinance, yeah.
That's one I want, too.
I only had one extra copy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, cause, uh, according to this.
Have you got one? Thank you.
That is specifically closing for, for the abandoned vehicle.
My leg, my leg don't like you long.
There you go.
Thank you. Jimmy, can you talk a little?
Yeah, when you get this.
Can, yeah, can we make it, we hear like one voice, cause I feel like there's like side conversations going on, and it's like, Jimmy, I'm sorry, did you? Sorry, did you have?
Yes, I have one.
Okay. Questions and like, I probably won't be able to answer them, but between Joe and Lisa, three of them probably. Can you answer?
So, continuing on, the ordinance and the uh, are, that did close, most of my vehicles do not fall under that category of being not abandoned.
You've got license plates mentioned.
No, I do not, so they are.
So, then that would be under.
Where does that say that, because I haven't found that. The only thing that should have been said, which this is why my vehicles are moving, is number seven, a vehicle that is at least three model years old, is mechanically inoperable, is left on private property, if you see a location visible on private property for more than twenty days. My vehicles run, and I proved it. I, I was communicating with Joe without Joe, I sent videos, they fired up and run and move. But it truly says, "No, but they have to do license insurance," right? Yeah, I couldn't find that. Cause all ordinance is based off the state's definition of a man-made vehicle, we checked them, but this being. Not the ordinance. Let's say, we're not here to argue.
Right, yeah, but.
Correct, yeah. Cause even the state ordinance doesn't say.
So, would that be something we could possibly do with Lisa, if that, if that ordinance?
We can, but we don't necess, we don't miss, we can, we have to, uh, we could be more stringent than the state, too. We don't have to, in all cases, have the same language as the state. So, but we can look into it, um, so your situation is, your cars are operable, they operate?
Yeah.
And I, it's been, it's been two years since I have looked at that close to it, so I have to look at it again. I haven't done a copy of it. So, we've got a definition for junk cars, and we refer to the Indiana statute for that.
Normally, I would base it that way, but one of them is my man, my doctor's grandfather's trapped out in one of the four, but none of them said, "No, I got straight on my house," so I've been dealing with that, so I haven't been able to do nothing.
Well, this says here in item two, that the term abandoned vehicle, set forth in the Indiana Code, and it was included as an exhibit to this ordinance. And it defines abandoned as a vehicle that's at least three model years old, is mechanically inoperable, so like yours is operable. Okay, and it's left on private property continuously, but see, you don't meet the definition of junk cars, because you're saying that it, it does run.
Yes.
Okay, so yours would then not be considered, in my opinion, from this definition we've used in this ordinance, would not be considered a junk car.
Right, therefore.
So, there's no need for us to change the ordinance, cause we already have defined it properly, according to the code.
And I'm within, within the code, correct?
Well, if it, if it's operable, yeah, so, and, so I look at, is it operable as, um, can you start it up? Does it roll, does it roll down the road?
I have, I have proof, I can show you videos right now if you want.
No, I mean, I don't need to do that.
Because I asked. We're thanking Joe for answering our questions, we do appreciate that.
And then we said it right in the next item, I agree that the town of Campbell'sburg, but hereby adopts the definition of abandoned vehicle, just contained in Indiana Code nine dash thirteen dash two dash one. And we incorporate the provisions of that statute into our ordinance, we do that a lot, we don't recreate the wheel, you know, there's already good code by the state, we'll typically adopt it for things that we need here. Yeah, was there anything else in this that you read before here that is a concern to you, or?
That's not a concern at the moment.
Okay, Joe, do you have anything you wanna weigh in on with that, I mean, it seems to me that we, there's nothing that we need to modify in this ordinance, it's
Um. It kind of is what it is, you'd be surprised how many vehicles that are sitting around Campbell'sburg that don't technically meet this statute, this one.
Yep. It can run, start moving, everything else, it's not mandatory.
Another thing to add to it, is, you know, where I live, two oh six South Union, I park my vehicles around the back of the house and everything. You can barely see it through the other way off the main road, and I, you have to, you have to look for it, but the only time you can really actually see them is when you travel. That's the only time you can really zoom.
Yeah, well, I think that's an issue, because this doesn't apply to you for that vehicle you're talking about, if it's up, so who did, who issued the notice?
Uh, Joe contacted me and asked me, or said that the town is, uh, looking to enforce this rule.
Yeah.
Able to move, get a. If I was able to move, get a move with, I, I work through the week, I work crazy hours, so.
Yeah.
I, I was like, I got pretty much late till the weekend, and he sent me the notice.
Okay, so then, then, then it sounded like your situation was resolved. What, what this was intended to address were, were like cars up on blocks, cars with hoods up, left in the same position in the street, which is a hazard, you know, that's a real, uh.
Real.
Yeah, things like that, that's what it was meant to address, not your situation.
I tried, I, I tried to keep the weeds down, uh.
Yeah.
I tried to maintain my property, because my vehicles are on my property, they're not overhanging any road or alley or anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the, the red truck has been there for three years. And I'm just now, like, now all of a sudden it's a problem.
You know, Joe, he helps us out a lot with unsafe buildings, and sometimes where we have unsafe buildings, buildings falling down, abandoned sometimes, dangerous, the people that would wander into them in an isolated world, you know, there's, uh, sometimes they also have vehicles on them, and he's good, he's good to stop and look into that, and, you know, a couple times, he's talked to some property owners that have issues with some housing, and maybe, maybe their vehicles are okay, once he asks some questions, but, you know, that's why he has to stop and ask, but it sounded like your situation was resolved.
No, I just wanted to make it known, in front of, and I want to get with, uh, more to, I guess. More than anything, you want acknowledgement that he was in the right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then you did the right thing, that's what you should do.
So like, we, a lot of people got, we didn't want to, a lot of people got, uh, you know, wrote up, or whatever you want to call it, because we just felt that we didn't want to just pick on one individual, so, everybody, and like, you came in and resolved it, that's cool, I mean, we wasn't trying to be mean, or just pick on you, we just wanted to make sure. Heck, even Anita got, you know, you know what I'm saying, so.
You just pick them out, give them the, give them the name of Joe. Let Joe go aggressive, okay, if they, if they're running, moving, well, then, that's fine, but I.
No, we need communication, just like with Linda's deal, I mean, if she called Joe and Joe said it was alright, well, Aaron didn't know, so, yeah, he probably did.
Yeah, but then.
I mean, but. I know, but I'm talking about.
Is that, Jimmy, do you feel better?
I thought.
I, I put that on the wall. No, that, um.
Is that not correct?
I'm just saying, thank you.
Is there anything else, Jimmy? Anything else that you want to say?
And there. Problem arises again, we.
She's wrong.
Mr. Wilson?
Alright, so, I'm probably late to the party on this, so. Um, the Monon Trail, how much, I, I have the privilege of living on it.
Yeah, you have.
And I'm sure it's a cool thing to most people, I'm not saying it isn't, okay, but they're taking care of it, now, I know the town isn't, it isn't your guy that's just taking care of the Monon Trail, correct?
No.
Not, alright.
But I have been trying to spray.
I understand that.
But. People back on what we can.
Now, I have contacted Radius in Indiana myself, a few times, and talked to Jeff again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it ain't spelled that way, I think it's. Um, and supposedly, they're just relying off of volunteer help to keep it weaving. Well, my small stretch is on a six foot height, you ain't nervous, and the weeds are growing this way, I can't hardly even mow up any. And they did their first weed wrangle last Thursday, am I correct in that area?
Uh, I've seen something about it, but I, I wasn't over there.
I contacted him, I'm, I'm in contact with him, and that's what I'm concerned about is, is, I know, you're working with them, right?
Trying to do best.
Okay, it's, and it's not going too hot, I'm assuming?
Yes, because Radius does have, they just did get two full-time employees, and now weed season is gonna be over with here soon, so.
Right, but, I mean, what am I gonna name?
They're, they're all having a tough time keeping up with what they got, so I.
Okay, because it's, it's off.
Yes, I, I believe it's a bit of.
It's off, alright, and I, I start understanding, like, I send the word as a town, what we can do, because any thing can just, it. But, it's a little bit worse for me, because my weeds don't grow straight up, if they grew straight up, I probably wouldn't be here talking to you. Unfortunately, it's a cliff on my end of things, and they grow out, I have trees growing into my yard, this, that, and the other. When the railroad owned it, I think, did you guys take care of it as a town before Radius completely took over?
No.
So railroad did?
The railroad.
Okay, I saw nothing but ripwire, now, I bought my aunt's house and everything, so I've seen this property my entire life. And this is the worst I've ever seen. Where a volunteer helped, I'm gonna face it, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, is, is there anything that's the community, we can make sure to keep Radius up to par on, that just don't take care of it once a year? Or once a year weed wrangle, because that ain't gonna work, in our area.
Yes, no, it, it, it's not gonna work.
Unless we can get a bunch of community servants, maybe.
I, I, I mean, I was, I was at the weed board meeting with Jeff and, and the county.
Which is a very polite name.
Yes, yes, super good guy.
I had a friend about that dumb bitch that's up behind my house and moved it for me, and I appreciate it, just looked at my bedroom, they know. I asked him, he goes, what's the big deal, I said, my wife changes in my bedroom, you're basically right on my window, that's kind of the big deal. He moved it the very same day I called, so I appreciate that.
But, uh, Radius told me at the moment, they're, they're out of time for the year. I don't know when their budget starts back over, I don't know if they're starting over in November, if they start back over at the start of the year. But they're gonna try to get them a buggy, two full-time employees.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, and try to manage five trailheads and sixty-eight mile.
I guess, to me, is, is, you know, I own property in Campbell'sburg, Indiana, so, does Radius own it, or is the state of Indiana?
Radius owns it.
So Radius owns property in Campbell'sburg, Indiana, so if I don't take care of mine, like you guys have proven, you guys are gonna come say something to me, right? So that's what I'm trying to hear, as, as, are we, as a town, saying something to Radius, that this actually better?
I, I, I talked to Jeff.
I, I've talked to him once myself, and I'm not exactly super white when I talk to him, and I'm really not, you also, I know you are, but.
Keep going.
Keep going, okay.
Yep. That's what I recommend, keep going.
And I'm not, I don't want to be rude to them, because I know it's a new thing, it's their first real year taking care of it, and I get that, but and I'm pretty sure they're trying a little bit harder now, because maybe the festival has brought to their attention. And I guess what I'm getting at is, is someone who lives on that trail, I don't want every summer for the rest of my life, to have to deal with weeds, and they don't get that care of, because Campbell'sburg Festival's down there. So.
And they're actually gonna use it, and by pay this year.
Yeah. Well, hopefully nobody passes that, because they fall to the side, you're never gonna find them.
Well, kind of, to, to add what he said, saying though, it's like, if he neglects his property like they have.
Yeah, everyone.
If he neglects their property, if he neglects his property, you would cite him or find him about.
I don't think we can do it, Radius, or get them a little bit more.
As a town, and we'd be like, hey, look, this is.
I'm not trying to slap a dog box down, obviously, I'm getting that, but.
I look for some grant lady to come through, I do, I think, you know, and perhaps the Washington Community Foundation, they're a good source of a lot of grant money. I look for someone to start, um, for this trail, I, I really do, I think there's some growing pains right now, we gotta, sometimes you don't initially know or understand or appreciate what kind of challenges they're gonna face initially, but I'd say, try to be patient and, um, give it a little bit of time. I don't know how, how big of an area that, that you're concerned with, um.
I have, I will.
I hate to suggest pesticide or herbicides, I hate to, because of all the other problems.
I own two blocks right up against.
Okay, well.
So it's a pretty long stretch, and what's unfortunate for mine is, is it's where it's raised.
Yeah.
So I got about a five and a half foot rock up at the end of my ground, and two foot, you know what pad foot is right here?
Yeah.
This property looks great, that, and it starts where it is, all the way over to.
Okay, is it too hard to use just a conventional weed eater?
You, I, and look the ripwire, I can't even brush all this.
Yeah.
It's, it's really, and now there's trees growing.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen a lot of sycamore trees growing.
Now, when I first moved there three years ago, before Radius took over completely, I didn't have anything to complain about, it wasn't awesome, but they took care of it at least a couple times, so. This year, nobody touched it, so I can't get close enough to even mow my portion of my yard, it, it gets wrapped up in my mower way, so that I kind of, you know, it's just. It's bad, and it's bad, if you go look, you look all the way down, pad foot's property all the way almost to the storage units here, it's bad.
It sounds like.
I wouldn't be proud of, I do, everybody's being very proud of it, and I understand that, but the way it looks past where we're building this bathroom here, it doesn't look very hot. And it's all the way.
Well, I mean, are you opposed to using some roundup?
I'm not opposed to doing.
We sprayed there, but it just costs so much to.
It costs money.
Yeah, I've, I've sprayed the section twice.
Yeah.
But you can tell.
Yeah.
I bet, I'll, I'll be honest with you guys, and I don't want to admit it, I sprayed the K B over, and I didn't want, I want to say that I did spend my money on it, I go, I didn't. Just being deliberate, because, hang on, I'm a fan that's careful of walking, man, I find that.
There's some real bad weeds that can walk as bad.
I didn't have a lot of them walk.
Yeah, and that's really complicated, and then.
Now, like, I'm just one person, I guess, what I only hear about, I'm one person, like, you should tell me to call when I put your things back, you know. When I'm just, I guess I'm hoping for my community's here with me on that deed that you're there as well, I'm not just one guy crying.
Right, right, that, that, that is the reason I went to let weed board meeting to see what Radius.
He knows my name, just so you know, so feel free to.
So Radius knows that we, that as far as the town, that we are concerned about the weed.
Actually, I know, I'm probably late to the party, so I'm, I mean, I follow that.
But he just simply told me and the county weed board that they didn't have any money.
Might not be a bad idea for us to talk to Pekin, too, and see what, what they're doing, how they're handling.
Appropriate in tons for, to take care of theirs for spray and mow and weeding, what Pekin's.
Through their town?
Yes. Yeah, so, I don't know how much they set aside for theirs, but yes, Pekin, that's what Pekin's.
Well, they have two miles paved through their, through town, Pekin?
Uh, they're taking care of theirs all the way to the board and section.
But they've got some that's gravel, or that's small gravel, don't they?
Yes, yes, a lot.
Salem has, what, about two miles paved, maybe more than that, I don't know. I've only done a small section. I've done a half a mile.
We mentioned something about maybe.
We'll try to do best we can to try to help.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not even here, I've done my part, but, you know, it's awful.
Yeah, one of them.
I've lived there, gone on four years now, and I'm, and what's grown through, where I have my own chain of things at, I plan to get mirrored, to get mowed, I can't, it's, it's really bad. And it's not the good, where I unfortunately live, it's not a good spot to even take care of, so I respect that, okay, I know it's rough. But it's bad all the way throughout, and it's just my fault.
I guess, Ed, just keep calling him, blame.
I do have.
And we'll take it in discussion, see maybe.
I, I just want, I just want to back it, I want to, I'm glad, Aaron, thank you, that's all I really want to know, if I had back it from my video as well, and I'm not just wanting to act right. I can be very loud, you can ask her that, but.
I do have one question for you all, well, I just moved out, there was trash out there in the front, we loaded up the truck hat, and it was sold off, there is rad weed, probably nine, ten foot in the back and everything, which we're trying to get that down. Um, it's horrible. Uh, the whole trailer, we're having to redo, because it was pretty much gutted, I had to get, uh, cabineted in there. Uh, my floors was down to wood, the wiper board and stuff, so we're really, all of our money's going towards it, okay? In the back, it is horrible, in fact, by my garage instead, am I going to be fined for all that, because we are doing the best that we can to get this place cleaned up?
What, what is your address?
Feel behind you?
Yes, there is.
What, what address, every time you're asking, or am I gonna be fined until it gets?
Right there by Rex's house.
Until it all gets cleaned up.
And shopping.
We're working hard.
In the red trailer. In the red trailer between red and season.
Mo, you keep picking at it, mo, you keep picking at it, there ain't else.
Uh, we got the front.
It's at the back.
I know, you just keep, like you're doing the trailer, just keep picking at the weed.
I got my tires and stuff out front, we're walking around the porch.
That's like a landlord.
I think it's all like one. We gotta get the yard all done.
I think on all these issues, it's just wanting to see progress, and like, nobody's gonna get upset if you're trying, yeah.
You know, you're fine, whatever, okay, that's in the six years.
We're working inside, we're working outside, we're trying to.
Alright, we're losing, we're losing control, people, okay, uh, Mr. Kerr, did you have something to say?
Yes, talk about volunteer on, on this, hold on, who needs to be contacted? I have a suggestion. I'm talking to you, Joe, thank you, please, there's a lot of people in my house, how else to do it? If I wanted to go down there, cut down that tree, just go out into the. Is there a problem?
I plan on trying to get to that tree before the five K.
Right, yeah.
The thirteen.
Then, again, I, I had this week before last week, but I know the tree you're talking about.
Here's gonna be the kicker, I'm not gonna walk down. Carry my salt.
Right, right.
You're gated.
Yeah, we're gated.
Keep running around.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Do what?
He said earlier, earlier in the meeting, he said the budget's decreasing by four percent.
No, it didn't decrease.
It increases next year, twenty twenty-six.
The taxpayer portion.
Taxpayer.
Alright, is that, I think we've been through everybody, is that good?
Yep.
We all happy, everybody's got their cake?
Almost happy.
Thank you for the cake.
Yes, you didn't get me some of the cake.
Yeah, I did.
Um.
I know we didn't get cake yet.
Yeah. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion during the meeting?
Okay.